Good evening. This school board meeting is now being recorded. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one name, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All are present with the exception of Enrique is here. Hi Enrique. Everyone is present. We have no one that is asked to present during the open forum, which was statements that needed to be to Martha by noon today. So I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Melissa.
Melissa, second by.
Mary.
By Mary. Any comments or questions? We'll be doing roll call vote again tonight. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion carries seven zero. On our consent agenda are the following items. These are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items. Under financials, all of those will be added to the June eighth meeting, so I'm not going to go through each one. Approval of school board minutes for the board study session on April thirteenth and regular board meeting on April thirteenth and our board study session on April twenty seventh. Personnel items as listed, candidates for employment, excuse me, leaves of absence and district retirements as listed, which will be celebrated in a retirement parade on May twenty first at Prior Lake High School. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? So moved. By Michael, second?
Second.
By Stacy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to the resolution of gifts. We are accepting donations this evening from Ms. Hugden and the PTC for seventeen thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars for the purposes at Jeffers Pond Elementary for a projector and large screen and from Rock for three hundred, three thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars for internet access for those in need through T-Mobile. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second by Enrique. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Melissa?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Laker Pride. Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting. Tonight, we have a couple very special Laker Pride events. I want to start off by recognizing and celebrating and thanking our student board representative, Isabel Bolter. I've enjoyed working with Isabel throughout the year, hearing her bright insights and her multiple perspectives that she always brings. Well, her senior year is definitely ending much differently than what she had anticipated as all of us anticipated. Her accomplishments and service to our school district and to Prior Lake High School speak volumes to who she is as a student and a person. Isabel demonstrates leadership daily in her actions and her unbelievably positive attitude. She's a true champion for Prior Lake Savage area schools and promotes school spirits in everything that she does. Isabel is inclusive and she speaks out different voices and opinions as she makes decisions and leads. Isabel is serving on the student council for their executive team for the second straight year and this year as president. Mr. Ingalls shared that Isabel has succeeded above and beyond expectations by organizing and operating the entire student government. This responsibility requires a tremendous amount of time and energy, but Isabel handles her duties flawlessly when others might certainly have struggled. Isabel's abilities to go far beyond her leadership at high school as well as a senior. She served in the Minnesota Association of Student Councils Capital Division Executive Board as president. So not only did she serve our district, but she served statewide in this leadership role as well. Next year, Isabel will be attending the University of Minnesota's Carlson School of Business. She was also one of very few students awarded the Carlson's prestigious Alpha Kappa Psi Scholarship. Thank you, Isabel, for everything that you have done for us, for all that you have brought to the school board and to the school district. We're really proud of you. We're going to miss you and we hope you well.
I'll be clapping. Yay!
So we owe you on that, Isabel. I'd also like to have Dave Brown and Melissa Olson. We're going to share some Laker Pride about Bridges. So I'll hand it over to Dave. Or Melissa.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow, board members and all. It is good to see you all here today. It is certainly our privilege to talk about the truly, truly special year that we've had at Bridges as the community and our schools and our colleagues have invested in this program with such a special building that has just been absolutely transformational. And I'm certainly privileged to be able to present tonight with my colleague Melissa, who I have been working with for over a decade. Melissa helped me open the program in two thousand nine and she just has brought so much to the table and it's just great to be able to share our truly special year with you all here tonight. Next slide, please, Martha. You know, it's hard to believe that a year ago, there was just a little bit more than a frame of where our building is. But as I came back from deployment, I was welcomed to a just a fabulous footprint that as I walked through, I just could not have believed my eyes. As we were formerly in a strip mall, some of you or many of you may remember to see the opportunities that we had to open an amazing building after several years of designing and planning with our partners that were just very responsive, just was an amazing opening and amazing start to the school year. And I just remember the many meetings that many of you attended as we're working with our design partners. So responsive, as our team said, we want this, we need these themes, here's our guiding principles. So responsive and just so collaborative in helping us come together to open such an amazing place. Next slide, please, Martha. You can certainly see all the smiles. That was our first time as a staff coming together, just awestruck, gobbersmacked perhaps is a word, just we just could not believe the opportunities that we had, not only for us as a staff, but we knew the transformational opportunities that this place is going to provide our students and certainly has fit that bill. It's been an absolutely transformational place that we can support our area students. Next slide, please, Martha.
I'd like to talk about our first day of school. You can imagine we were on pins and needles. We suspensefully waited for that first day of school and our fingers were crossed that the doors would open on time and of course they did. And at that moment, the light and the students poured in, the smiles on their faces, as Dave said, were evident. And the students and staff alike were in awe of the many options, comfortable learning spaces and really appreciated the style and the care that went into our design. And during that design phase, I remember describing what I wanted to see, like my own personal vision of what opening that door might be. And I envisioned the doors blasting open as if Dorothy had landed on Oz and it went from black and white to technicolor. And I wanted that experience for my students to be able to really feel that transition. And as you might expect, it sure didn't disappoint. It was a fantastic first day. Next slide, please. And with that change, you know, came everything. It is obviously the validation and affirmation, as you can see in our students' eyes on those pictures that we always take pictures. And it did change everything. You can see it. For those that were with us the years before, their vision of their school finally came to life. Many Bridges students, as you know, go without. Their lives are not always full of technicolor. But when they saw the hard work the district and the school put into designing a personalized learning space just for them, they knew they were valued. They absolutely knew it. And because of that, they thrive and it is fantastic to see how proud they are of their space and how proud they are that they were part of this transition and how proud they are of our community for making it happen. Next slide. So with that, we have engagement. We have increased attendance. They felt valued. They showed up. The students took advantage of all the opportunities presented in front of them. They are engaged because they have room. They have room to learn and grow. Their environment mirrors the image they have of themselves as learners. There is intense personalization. There's flexibility. There is versatility. There is technology. They've become skillful at presenting and using the amazing technology that we have in our building. They've become critical thinkers. They use it. They present. They problem solve. They absolutely find themselves engaged in their surroundings. And like I said, they show up. It's fantastic. Go ahead, Dave.
You know, one of the biggest differences that I have about our new building is the feel. You can tell that when students, especially students that have some significant obstacles and some significant barriers and has had some significant struggles and are feeling marginalized and not connected, having a building the way that we have is just an absolute game changer, especially in wellness. The feel of our operations, of classes, of just the day-to-day stuff as you walk around. It is so light. It is so relaxed. It is so warm. It is just, it's hard to describe how an enhanced space like we have just changes the wellness. And specifically here, in this, in this photo, you can see some of our Prior Lake Rotarians working with our students. That has been a fundamental part of our program for over a decade, our Strive program. Smiles and just connection. And in the bottom right there, you can see the former city manager of Prior Lake, Frank Boils. Mr. Boils has been in our school for almost a decade, teaching junior achievement classes. And the, just the whole, the natural lighting, the open spaces, plenty of places to go, plenty of different places, the flexible rooms. We've showed you several different room styles that students can take advantage of. It just has been an absolute game changer in so many ways. Next slide, please. One of the things that I especially appreciate is how it's changed and transformed our community. Not only our school community, but our larger community. We've been able to hold several events in there. You can see a packed house there from one of our Strive meetings. And you know, there's days that Ms. Olson here is doing something so phenomenal. It's like a magnet that draws kids to see what's going on. And normally Melissa's classes aren't that big, but what she was doing that day just drew a bunch of kids in and it's just, everyone has a great appreciation for one another. It is, it has absolutely been transformational. Next slide, please.
We have more opportunity and with more opportunity, so much more can be had by these kids. Bridges gives students the opportunity they need, that they deserve. We can serve more students. The beauty of our building is that we have more to offer because we can bring more to us. We have increased their learning potential. We offer them that personalization, which gives them new opportunities to dive into their own passions. We build strong relationships that are enhanced by our educational structure. All Bridges staff are highly invested and in doing so, when those relationships do evolve, they allow us to help them help themselves a little bit more, which is very important. We provide them with care. We provide them with support. Much, much needed skills. They have a strong educational future beyond high school because of the opportunities we have given them. And they graduate and they move on to become amazing young adults.
Next slide, please. You know, and one of the things we've been working on over the last two years is our partners with our broader community, Ed Visions and our Regional Centers of Excellence to transform our systems into more of a project-based learning. That's happening already in a, at a classroom level. But it's been great working with our partners now that we have so much ability to utilize space to better personalize our systems and enhance learning through that manner. Next slide, please, Martha. And as Melissa said, they graduate and they make lasting connections. As I look at this, these are all alumni that had to come and see the school and they wanted to take some pictures. And so these are electricians. These are restaurant workers. These are Marines. These are four-year college students.
Absolutely.
So they're just a great, great spectrum of what our students go on to be. And once, once they have that achievement, they are just so loyal and so appreciative of having a spot that they could go when they didn't really know where else to go. And that's what our community's investment has provided them. Next slide, please.
Absolutely. And so speaking about our larger community, our district family, our administrative family, you know, when Mr. Brown and I presented at the Minnesota Association of Alternative Programs Conference earlier this year, we talked about our building and the investment that our community had in us and the trust that was put into our hands to provide something so needed in our community and be responsible and do so in a way that was honorable and really showed the integrity that we had and feel about our program. And so I spoke about our community and I spoke about who we are as a school. And it was an administrative day, so there are a lot of administrators present. And as we described what we had and what we did, literally when they asked questions, they said, "What planet are you from? Because I want to go there." They thought that we were from another planet, literally. To have this amazing building in support of community. And I laughed and I said, "Well, we are from Planet PLSAS, people. We are here. You know, we matter." And, and they were blown away by what we have been given and by the responsibility that we carry in that gift. And so part of my final thoughts are of course to be so very thankful for what we have and for all of you and for our greater community to have allowed us to create this amazing building and do the things that we always knew we could do.
Yeah, just my closing thoughts is also a word of thanks to Dr. Stallow and Mr. Holberg for your great leadership and partnership in this. I certainly have to recognize Jim and his staff helping us getting going and maintaining a great building and great operations. So many thanks to go all around. Board members, thank you for your trust in what we're doing. It has been a truly special year and I'm very thankful to be able to say a few words about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. That was awesome to get caught up into what's been going on there. Dr. Stallow, did you have anything to add? No?
No, I'm sorry. I was just muting. It just, you know, I think Melissa, you named it. I think from the first day that staff certainly, but students walked through the door, it felt different. And what I've heard from your colleagues and from you all year is, is the students themselves have been different. They've been more academic. I've heard one of your colleagues talk about this group of students being more academic. And you know, I'm sure part of that is exactly what you talked about, the pride that they have, the trust that they know you have in them in this space. And they've delivered and you've all delivered. It was, it's been an amazing experience. And you guys continue to make it your own, which is what it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel items, there's a number of resolutions and I believe each one needs to be voted on separately and I'm going to turn it over to Jim Querham.
Okay, good evening. Board Chair, Board Lieutenant Stallow. Tonight, we are bringing forward seven personnel resolutions. I don't think if we would have thought back two or three months that we would have thought we would have been here today doing this tonight, but nevertheless, in these sort of unprecedented and unique times for a lot of reasons, I'm coming forward as the district to request that you approve the following seven resolutions. Board Chair, if you're okay with it, I think although it is in the board packet for public review, it might be prudent if I read those, if you're okay with it, the resolution itself, but I'll leave the names because of the list. Off of there, I would just read the resolution out loud so everyone hears it.
That would be, that'd be perfect.
Okay. There are seven resolutions. Three are related to this spring and COVID-19 and there are four of them that are related to community ed budget limitations. And so I'll go through each of those, starting with the first one. The board's requested to approve the following resolution. It is a resolution approving layoff of certain community education employees. Whereas, as a result of changes to the educational programs due to COVID-19 pandemic and financial limitations, the district needs to reduce positions and expenditures in various areas served by the district. Whereas, the administration notified the employees listed below of their, of their layoff on April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, number seven nineteen, Prior Lake Savage, as follows. One, that layoffs effective May first, two thousand twenty, for the following positions as listed in your board packet. And two, these layoffs shall remain in effect through the end of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, specifically June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And this would require a roll call vote.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as written or read by Jim?
So made.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
Jonathan, any comments or questions? I am seeing none, so I'll take a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Stacy, raise your hand.
Oh, Stacy, I'm sorry. Stacy?
Um, yeah, I just want to, you know, probably say this once, but just recognize that many of these employees have been longtime employees and really ambassadors of our district. A lot of times, they're the first people that people meet when they come in the door, whether it be through ECFE or just, you know, testing for their students or even, and they stay with them throughout, throughout the years, through the years of having their students in the district as well as, you know, thirty years later when they're going to a driver's safety class at, you know, for fifty-five and above. So I just want to recognize that the names on here, you know, are very valued people. I take no kindness in doing this. And this is obviously very unprecedented and something I'm not really looking forward to doing this evening. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Lee, are we going to have discussion and comments after every resolution, just to be clear?
Uh, yes, I believe we would. We would.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Stacy. I think all of us would echo your sentiments. Michael?
I would, I just would like to echo those sentiments as well, serving on both the Early Childhood Committee and the Community Ed Committee. This has been a real hard several weeks, being deeply involved with both and, and being onsite at events with them and listening to their discussions at the meetings. These are incredible employees and as we mentioned briefly at the last meeting, this is where a high level of community engagement happens as well as people get to know our district. This is really hard. This is very personal. We are in the business of people. So just to acknowledge this moment as we're happening it, to express our gratitude and to do everything we can to get back to our programming going forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I think I have a motion and a second. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye. Aye, excuse me.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
And myself. That motion carries seven zero. Next.
The second resolution, the board is requested to approve the following resolution. A resolution approving layoff of certain secretarial employees. Whereas, as a result of changes to educational programs due to COVID-19 pandemic and financial limitations, the district needs to reduce positions and expenditures in various areas served by the district. Whereas, Article nine of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty collective bargaining agreement between the district and Prior Lake Savage Secretaries Federation contains seniority and bumping provisions in the event of layoffs. Whereas, the administration notified the effective employees and the bumping process was completed before May first, two thousand twenty. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, number seven nineteen, Prior Lake Savage, as follows. One, that the layoff of the following secretaries listed in the board packet is approved effective May first, two thousand twenty. And two, these layoffs shall remain in effect through the end of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, specifically June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And that would require a roll call vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as read by Jim?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Mary? Any comments or questions? Melissa?
Thanks, Lee. Again, this is so difficult. We wish that we weren't in these times, that our state was not going through this. It's my hope and my prayers that we can get these folks back as soon as possible this fall. Every one of you in the last list are so important to us, our district. You guys are the glue. So it's very, very difficult. And again, I just wish this wasn't occurring within our state and our country, but hopefully we can get through this very, very quickly and get you guys back on staff. We're going to be missed. You guys are going to be missed.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other comments? Seeing none. It's a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Jonathan, did you say aye?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero. Next.
The third resolution, the board is requested to approve the following resolution approving layoff of certain MSEA bargaining unit employees. Whereas, as a result of changes to educational programs due to COVID-19 pandemic and financial limitations, the district needs to reduce positions and expenditures in areas served by the district. Whereas, pursuant to Article eleven of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty collective bargaining agreement between the district and the Minnesota School Employees Association Para Educators, the administration notified the employees listed below of their layoff on April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, seven nineteen, Prior Lake Savage, as follows. One, that the layoffs effective May eleventh, two thousand twenty, for the secretaries as listed in the board pack, I'm sorry, the ECF. For the secretaries as listed in the board pack, I'm sorry, the ECFE assistants as listed in the board packet. These layoffs shall remain in effect through the end of 2019-2020 school year, specifically June 30, 2020. This would require a roll call vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as Jim has read?
So made.
Second?
Second.
By Enrique? Any comments or questions? Mary?
Mary?
Well, I just want to say that especially with with all the people, but particularly with those that served Served our families and our special ed students and the the contributions that they made. Your your positions and your contribution to everybody. And the lives of so many students and parents, basically the whole community, it made us a better place. And the statistics clearly showed that after school, early childhood and all the support positions, including You know, building monitors had a direct and positive impact. It even in educational outcomes, they just had a tremendous impact. You know, unfortunately, your jobs are those that were based upon revenue generation and at a time of pandemic, as Jim has pointed out. With limited revenue generation to support the programs, I this is a unfortunate consequence and no fault of your own. My only personal regret is that we didn't have the time to find ways of delivering your value electronically or in other ways. A lot of these circumstances are completely without, you know, outside of the districts or the board's control with the pandemic. You know, and I want to recognize to everybody there to have your job suddenly eliminated for any reason. Takes a personal toll that manifests itself in in various ways, even when there is no fault. But throughout the community. The outpouring of support and the sadness at your loss has been tremendous. And only I can only speak for myself, but I want to say that when things get better, and they will get better. That you are welcome back. The community needs you, the schools need you, and the students who serve to miss you and need you in all capacities. So I wanted to say thank you to the service that you've given to our district and I and I hope That, like I said, when things get better, we'll see you again.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Did somebody say Jonathan? Oh, Melissa?
Again, this is extremely difficult. Andrea and Amy and Chris and Museum, I'm sorry, Musumi. Brenda, Mary, Sherry, Kimberly, Nancy, Rita, Denise and Gina. You guys are my neighbors. You are my friends. You are, you go to my church. And you Are so needed in our community and in our school and it is with heartfelt appreciation. That we hope that this gets done as soon as possible because you are valued. We need you. And we hope that this gets cleared up quick. It's very difficult for all of us on this and And I hope that it ends quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other comments or questions? I think we're all feeling the same pain That all the other board members are mentioning, so. I'm not seeing any other comments. Jonathan?
Looking for a vote?
Yeah, I'm looking for a vote.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
That motion carries seven zero. Moving on to the next one.
Okay, shifting gears just a bit, there's a three out of the four next resolutions are related to community Community Ed specifically for next contract year. So this is about financial limitations and reductions within community and at least the next two parts. So with that, the board is requested to approve the following resolution, resolution terminating employment of certain community education employees. Whereas, a result of changes to educational programs due to financial limitations. The district needs to reduce positions and expenditures in various areas served by the district. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 719 Prior Lake Savage as follows. One, that the employment of the following individuals listed in your board packet is terminated effective July 1, 2020. Two, administration is directed to notify each of these employees in writing That their employment has been terminated due to financial limitations. So again, these are for next contract year, next fall. And it would require a roll call vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as read by Jim?
So made.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Stacy? Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. So a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michael?
Ayes.
Mary?
Aye.
Sorry, it's a lot of order. Enrique?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
And that motion carries seven zero. The next one?
Next resolution is the resolution approving layoff of certain secretarial employees. The board is requested to approve this resolution. Whereas, a result of financial limitations, the district needs to reduce positions and expenditures in various areas served by the district. Whereas insufficient work exists for the Community Education Services Secretary And Community Education Services Secretary positions. Whereas Article 9 of the 2018-2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the District And Prior Lake Savage Secretaries Federation Contains seniority and bumping provisions in the events of layoffs. Whereas, the administration notified the affected employees and the bumping process took place before May 1, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 719 Prior Lake Savage as follows. That the layoff of the the secretaries listed in your board packet is approved effective July 1, 2020. Would require a roll call vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as Jim has read?
So made.
Second by Melissa. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. This is a roll call. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
That motion carries seven zero. The next one?
Hey, the next one is unrelated to either of those events. The reason for this is because we have two special needs nurses in the district that are one-on-one with students. One of those students is exiting our system, therefore there is only the employment needs of one. And this this is in the MSEA contract. So the the district is requesting the approval of the following resolution. Resolution approving layoff of special needs nurse employee. Whereas, a special needs nurse position is no longer needed due to a lack of students. Whereas Article 11 of the 2018-2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the District and Minnesota School Employees Association Para Educators contains seniority and layoff provisions in the event of an employee layoff. Now therefore be it resolved by the School District of Independent School District 719 Prior Lake Savage as follows. The following employee listed in your board package shall be placed on layoff status At the end of the 2018-2020 school year, specifically June 30, 2020. And that would require a roll call.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as read by Jim?
So made.
Second. Melissa, did you? Did you make a second? Mary, second? Comments or questions? Okay, roll call. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary? Hi. Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
And that motion carries seven zero. I believe we're to the last one, Jim?
Yep, and this is a two-part resolution, so there's actually two resolutions in one, but they're tied together. If you remember, in February, the board always passes a resolution directing administration to look at reduction programs and positions. And this falls within the teacher bargaining unit and there's some statutory and contractual ways that this Resolution needs to be handled. So the first is a resolution reducing programs and the second would be the individuals That are assigned to that. Therefore, You will have names read in here because the names are part of the actual resolution. So the first one, resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 719 Prior Lake Savage as follows that the following program Be discontinued, actually in this case reduced, effective at the end of 2019-2020. Early childhood family education positions, 1.73 FTEs. This would require a roll call vote.
Oh, each one is separate, Jim? Even though? That's fine.
Yeah, I believe so. Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as read by Jim?
So made.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
Jonathan, any comments or questions? Okay, it's a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
That motion carries seven zero.
And the last one, this is the resolution proposing to place Kimberly Grautman and Samantha Denkey Turpin on layoff status. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 719 Prior Lake Savage as follows. That it is proposed that the teachers Kimberly Grautman and Samantha Denkey Turpin Be placed on layoff status without pay or fringe benefits effective at the end of the 2019-2020 school year On June 30, 2020 pursuant to Article 10 subdivision five Of the 2019-2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the School District and Prior Lake Savage Education Association. That the written notice, which is also attached in the board packet Be sent to said teacher regarding the proposed placement on layoff status without pay or fringe benefit In the following form, and again, that is in your board, in the public board packet as well. That the ground or reason for the proposed layoff stated above is hereby adopted as fully and through separately set forth and resolved herein. And that would take a roll call vote as well.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution as read by Jim?
So made.
By Michael?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It was Jonathan for second.
Something's going weird with screen. Melissa, did you say second?
I know Jonathan had seconded it.
I didn't hear Jonathan. Was it Jonathan? Okay. Is there any comments or questions? I think I just want to say that with all these resolutions. Many of the things that have been said previously by board members tonight would all be echoed in each one of these resolutions. It's not easy. It's very difficult. And I wish that we wouldn't have to do it and I wished all of this would end and everything would get back to where it's supposed to be, so. It's very difficult to go through these this evening. But unfortunately, that's what we're faced with. So if there are no other comments. I'll take a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Hi.
And that motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Jim. Next is educational support staffing request.
Just, we had a, we have a retirement in the tech department who As you know, are going full tilt, many, many hours, and there is retirement in the summertime coming up here. We are changing the job title of it, which is the second half of the personnel action. Therefore, we're bringing this forward. There is no cost to the district. It's just that there is a replacement That that may be Requested and we wanted to get this out in front of you at this time. And as the staffing request is in the board packet and the specifics are there, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the educational support staffing request?
So made. Melissa?
By Melissa, second?
Second by Michael?
Second by Michael. Any comments or questions? Mary?
Jim, just for the benefit of the audience that will be listening to this. Can you just explain the change in title and that the position is is not actually being eliminated? It's going, it looks like it's going from a A technology, a generic technology support role to a network systems technician? But the position is still, will still be fulfilled next year?
Yeah, that's correct. That we have not filled the position. It hasn't been posted. But and you know, maybe Jeff could speak a little bit more to the job itself. But I believe we're going from someone who's been there a long time in the same role. And there's a need to have some assistance and someone who has some expertise and related to the network instead of being one deep That we have Someone else that can pitch in and help out. So, yep. Did I answer your question, Mary?
Yes, yes, it does. So thank you for the clarification and it's mostly for Just just an explanation to those that will be listening to this. Make sure it's clear.
Right.
Jeff, did you have anything to add?
No, I think Jim covered it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all of them, oh, roll call vote. Jonathan?
I think Enrique had a comment.
Oh, Enrique, you did? Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I'm late to raise my hand. So just kind of a Just trying to bubble things up to the 30,000-foot view. We just read through a series of resolutions of Layoffs or programs that would have to be reduced going into 2020 or to the 2020-2021 school year. Recognizing that those are revenue generated programs. And this is not necessarily revenue generated. I'm just kind of Struggling with Prospect of we're cutting staff, yet we're going to reposition and Refill this position elsewhere within admin. So can you help me Come to terms with that? Is this an absolute essential position that will get backfilled or where does it fit within that overall spectrum?
So just to clarify, if I may, Chair Schimmack, just to clarify. Are you, Enrique, thinking that this is an administrative position that's being posted? I thought you had mentioned that in your statement.
Yeah, within the DSC.
Right, so technology, the 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 position of the individual who's retired was a field technician, like a field tech. This position that's being posted is for, as it says, network systems, the network sys-
I'm having a problem with hearing everyone else's, but you seem to be having a Problem hearing you. It's breaking up.
We can hear you.
Jeff, your ears freezing at at certain times.
Okay. Let me try this again. So we have a So a field tech. All right. So yes, it is a network systems technician. That, you know, obviously our network runs all the devices. It is directly-
Martha or Chelsea, could you help us out? Is something over?
I guess it's probably just bandwidth issues would be my guess. Yeah, you can hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. So Jeff can probably shake his head. I can try to jump in here, but right now with the, the level of techno, you know, the direction we're going with technology, it just becomes more and more and more, and there's more programs. There's more web based programs. There's permissions. All these things continue to mount and Rush does a great job, but he's one deep in that position. And I, the thinking is, is that we need to have more than one person who fully understands all of that network stuff, and this person would assist in that endeavor. So it's not an admin position, but you're right, Enrique, it is stationed out of DSC, I guess. But I think it's one of those that's a fairly crucial thing in the direction that we're going to be able to support everything we do. And so I think that's why the request has come forward. I know it's a unique time and it doesn't feel right, but it's one of those positions that I think are pretty crucial to be able to backfill so that you have some redundancy.
It's also a replacement of an employee that's retiring. It's not an added position, correct?
That's correct. Yes. Just the title change.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Roll call, Jonathan?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
That motion carries seven zero. One more, Jim.
One more. There are two job descriptions that we are just updating, and one of them obviously is the one we just talked about. You know, changing it from its current title to the network systems and then tweaking it. If you look at the job description, it talks about a lot of the things that they'd help be responsible for. So that is one job description. The other job description is an emergency plans coordinator. Probably flushed out of another job description and put in place there for someone to be able to assist. We are not asking for another authorization for this. It, the, the manning or personnel stays the same. We're just updating the job description for this one. So the first one, job description is one we've been discussing. The second one is an update to have an emergency plans coordinator job description.
Could I, could I add something to that second one?
Yes, Jim.
That's a grant supported position for two years, if you'll remember. That was a grant we got, and part of the grant was used for this position, some network stuff and some radios.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the two job descriptions as described?
So made.
Jonathan? Motion made by Jonathan, second by?
Second by Michael.
Any comments or questions? I have a comment. Mary? Go ahead, Mary. Um, so one of the questions that I've always had about a full time or named emergency plans coordinator is that normally to do tabletop FEMA exercises, et cetera, that's usually brought in from the outside. That's not a full time position because they train internally. And also to perform a tabletop usually want an outside perspective. That is also a standard in the industry, whether it be a physical emergency or a technical emergency. So I just would like some further clarification. If, if we actually have a named person on this grant and the grant can be used for other purposes for other personnel is, is particularly for technical personnel. I just have a question why we have a full time emergency plans coordinator that has this particular job description, not necessarily title, but the job description itself.
Sure, I can help with that, Mary. It's not a full time position. It's a part time position. It's a former fire chief for Savage who's in that role currently for the last year, and we've done an amazing amount of work. Great value.
Okay, I, I know that we had police and the fire chief, as well as I believe the county involved in helping with their FEMA. Does that, is that encompass all of these or just the fire chief?
This, the position that is being approved tonight, or the job description is for former chief McCall, who was here two days a week, and he helps us coordinate and he gives us great context and insight into our programs.
Okay, thank you. That clarified it.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions? Then I'll take a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Now we'll move on to unfinished business. We've had some discussion already on the fast bridge learning proposition or proposal. And I believe we have Chris Lynn Goodman here to review, give us a brief overview again.
You do. Good evening, school board members. A good evening, Dr. Salo. I've got the assessment update for you this evening. Martha, you can advance the slide. So this assessment update hits on three different of our strategic directions. One of those is that measurable student learning, because we'll actually be able to measure that with this as well as any achievement gaps. It continues the fiscal accountability by making some responsible decisions around expenditures and really gets into that safe, secure, supportive environment because part of it involves a social emotional learning component. I just wanted to quickly go through the process that we went through. So currently we use math assessments in our district and Ames Web Plus. Those assessments we use three times a year, grades two through eight. In the MTSS audit that you've heard a lot about that we did last year, last spring and got the results of summer and fall, one of the recommendations was to conduct an assessment audit. We conducted that assessment audit this winter. We were specifically looking for where different assessments in our portfolio might have some gaps and where they overlap. The assessment audit really engaged a wide range of educators. So not only people coming together for minis at the DEC, but also went out to building sites and interviewed people. We came up with a recommendation and then that recommendation was vetted and we're bringing that to you this evening. So the recommendation is to sunset the map and the Ames Web Plus assessments that we've been using and to go with fast bridge learning. We get some more specific information from fast bridge learning than we do from map testing. With fast bridge, we can find out really detailed information about student skill level and teachers can use that to make decisions about whole class, small group and individual students for what they need next. It reduces the time in testing significantly instead of having both an Ames Web Plus and a map test. We just would have one test for each math and literacy that would take about twenty five minutes. One of the big benefits is that it includes a social emotional screener and that not only is taken by students, but also has a teacher component. And so results can be compared and we can get some great information and find out universally and some group and individual levels where students might need support. It's cost effective because we would not be spending the money on both map and info plus, we would just be purchasing one product. And this recommendation comes with input from a large group of district stakeholders. So that's not only educators, though, including teachers, administrators, counselors, social workers, school psychologists, but also the advisory committee. And the fast bridge learning will be implemented in grades K through eight in reading and math as well, grades K through eight. That was another recommendation that came out of the MTSS audit. As well as this SCL screener, yet another recommendation of the MTSS audit. And as I spoke about before, it has the teacher and student administration grades three through twelve. And so teachers as well as students take that and results can be compared. Fast Bridge also includes growth measures, so we can look at growth from fall to winter and winter to spring. The assessment's given three times a year. Also, we can look at spring to spring, fall to fall. We can use aspects of fast bridge learning for progress monitoring. So that's especially useful for students who might have IEPs as well as students who might be in interventions. And fast bridge learning is an online administration as well, and that will help us out. We have a process where we currently have a group of professionals that go and assess students and will now be able to do the assessments much faster and have them done earlier in the school year. Some of the implications of the change to fast bridge learning are clearly around communication with spring testing not happening this year. That will be all the more important to make sure that we find conduits for communicating clearly at this time of year over the summer and into the fall. This will definitely require more training and support ongoing. So not only helping teachers and administrators make sure they know how to administer the assessment, but also how to use the information they get from it. And then there are also some programmatic decisions. So some of the programs that we have in the district, the benchmark to be included in those programs will have to change from when we use in map to fast bridge. That should be a smooth transition because both of them have, are nationally normed and have national percentiles. And this also means that programming for programs like Laola de Lago will have to work on the sun setting of map. However, fast bridge does have a Spanish literacy section, so some of those are, are eased. Okay. What questions might you have?
First, I'll take a motion to approve the change to fast bridge learning. Do I have a motion? By Stacy?
Second.
Second by Jonathan. Does anyone have any questions? Mary? Thanks for the presentation. I have a couple of questions, and I think you already answered them last time. I'm just looking for a little bit of clarification. For the students who took the map last fall, and obviously we're not having spring testing, even though they're both nationally recognized, how do you correlate the two, particularly with the gap coming up? I mean,
Yeah, that's a great question. So they're both nationally normed and they both give us percentiles. So we'll get some information on where, on those percentiles where students rank nationally. We'll also be able to look at where students are in the fall as they come in, and both map and fast bridge also have measures within that makes some projections to of what MCA scores would be. So we will to use those two tools to get some indication of where students are.
Okay, so I know you said this last time about the MCA, but one of the issues we've always had with the MCA is a lack of SCL engagement and a deeper dive. So is this, I guess what I'm asking is the correlation of the, of the data. Is there going to be extra work on your part to try to translate that for teachers? Is this gonna, are we going to go through that? How is, how is that going to happen?
Can you be a little bit more clear about the front end of your question? I didn't quite understand what you're looking for.
Well, sometimes the, the MCAs don't necessarily reflect, you know, they're, they're, they're a hard test score. We're all used to seeing them, et cetera. When you say they're correlating back to the MCAs, the MCAs don't tell some in-depth stories about, you know, cohort correlation, et cetera. It's, it's kind of done manually. I mean, they don't do it. And plus, the MCAs have gone through changes in a K through eight, just in the past eight years, right? So I'm just wondering, to the benefit of the teachers, how is this data, despite the fact that both the map and the, and the and the new fast bridge correlate to the MCA, how is that going to be translated to the teachers so they can adjust as quickly and as, as quickly as possible under the new?
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, actually, in this case, I think fast bridge will be more useful than map scores because we'll be able to find out about any skill deficiencies for students or, or which skills students really have down pat. So this, the results of the fast bridge assessment will actually be far more useful than MCA scores would be.
Okay. And now we pay for the NWA license. Is that license currently up after three years? Because I think the last time we did that was in twenty sixteen, or are we going to have an overlapping cost between what we pay?
We don't have an overlap, no.
When was the NWA up for renewal? Was it this year?
It actually, it's annually.
It renews annually. Okay. So we just aren't going to pay it next year. And what is the difference in cost between the NWA and the fast bridge? Now, I want to clarify that, that that's not, that shouldn't be the overall reason why we go to another learning platform. But I do want to know in light of our current financial situation.
Sure. So the fast bridge fee is around seven dollars and fifty cents per student and the NWA map fee is about thirteen dollars a student.
So it's about half. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, I think we went through this in quite, quite detail during the work session and a few more questions tonight. So with that in mind, I'll take a roll call vote. Did somebody roll call vote? Jonathan?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Stacy?
Hi.
Enrique?
Hi.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Chris Lynn. Moving on now to district budget, enrollment, long range planning. This has been discussed at least at three other previous meetings. I believe it was two work sessions and one board meeting. We've had really good, deep discussion over that period of time with some changes made through the course of the presentation. And I'm assuming by what I see that Julie is going to give a quick review of that same presentation or a presentation. Is that correct, Julie?
There'll be a group of us.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and kick things off. Thank you, Chair Schimmack and board members. Good evening. As we said, tonight, we will continue the discussion of the budget that we have been, that's been ongoing for the last several months. And tonight's recommendations that we are bringing forward were discussed at the board study session last Monday night. As you've seen multiple times, Martha, if you'll go ahead and forward it, please. As you see multiple times, we want to ensure that as we work through the process, our budget in, and the decisions that we make are aligned to our strategic plan and to ensure that we've got the support that we need to make sure that these strategic directions and our goals come to life. Our outcomes this evening are to share with you the budget adjustment recommendations that you have reviewed and discussed and to seek board approval. And now Julie is going to share a little bit of context with us about the budget.
I do want to talk a little bit about our budgeted funds. There are several different funds in the district's budget, the largest being the general fund. Each of these funds is separate and the money can only be spent for what it's intended in each of these funds. And even including the general fund, there's some specific restrictive funds within that fund itself. And so for the majority of our budget, the general fund is our general education and our special education. The majority of our costs come out of the general fund, but we do have some restrictive funds within that fund itself that can only be spent on certain things such as Q comp, capital light. that can only be spent on certain things such as Q comp, capital items, our long-term facility maintenance, safe schools, targeted services and our student activities. So we can't spend money that's intended for student activities on someone's wages or benefits. And same for a lot of these components within the restricted fund. So we have the general fund and then we have the fund two, which is our child nutrition services fund, which is all of our lunch and breakfast accounts for our students. And that is specific and all of that money is only used for that purpose in fund two. For our community services fund, that's a separate fund as well. And so you'll see that we have services for early childhood, family ed, kids company, our preschool screening, our preschool programs and our school readiness and all the other programming that we do for driver's ed and all of those other programming. All is in the community services fund. And that's a separate fund that can't be utilized in any other fund as well. Our building construction fund, those are the funds that we receive from our building bond. And that can only be spent on the building itself and those costs. Our debt service fund, that fund is specifically for paying back the debt of those bonds for the building construction fund. And so all of that money is held separately as well and can only be used for that purpose. And then we also have our internal service fund, which is our self-insured health and dental accounts and our other post-employment benefit funds. Those are all in our internal service funds and those can also only be spent for those purposes. So I just want to make sure people understand how our funds work within our total budget for the district. As we move forward, we just want to talk a little bit about our basic formula. As you know, over the years, the basic formula has not kept up with inflation. And so costs have risen higher and faster than the revenue that we've received from the state. And so that gap is over $1,300 difference between what the district receives for general education formula and what inflation has increased. Next slide, Martha. When we look at our district and we we try and really look closely at how we spend our money and the revenues that we receive. We're one of the lowest revenue generating districts in the state. Of the 330, I think we're 226. And so, and even among our peers and our surrounding districts, we have the least amount of revenue that we received among those our surrounding districts. We have a low student population that qualifies for free reduced lunch. So that percentage is low. We have one of the lowest operating referendums. And so we have relied on increasing student population over the last several years to help generate some additional revenue for our district. But as you can see, we receive the least amount of money. And as we go to the next slide, that you will see that we also spend the least amount of money. With the majority of our revenue expenditures are on people. Naturally, we're an educational organization and it's people that we need to help us with this to educate our students with a high-quality education. So about 80% of our total expenditures are simply for salary and benefits. The remainder purchase services, such as our transportation contracts, our technology, those are our two biggest pieces of our purchase services. And then we also have supplies and materials and capital items. And so you can see that where we run a very lean ship and it's difficult during these times when we have we're already running very lean that we are looking at without additional students looking at making some reductions at this time. I mean, here is a slide with FY21 operating referendum. So that's next year. That's the revenue that districts surrounding us will receive. We are at $623.97 next year. Other districts, Burnsville is at the maximum. That's the maximum at $1,900. And Rosemont is close to that. And so you can see we have one of the lowest besides Shakopee and Farmington. And I talked about this a little bit last time. That this year, our operating referendum is $923.97. Last year, the legislature moved $300 out of our operating referendum into a different account called LOR or local optional revenue. And so every district had that happening. So you can see if they had $1,900, they probably had an additional $300 on top of that that they're receiving. So it's a little bit difficult when we talk about district expenses and what we're receiving revenue and why it's so complicated sometimes. It's simply because the legislature has changed some things. So yes, last year it was 923 or actually the current year. When I talk last year, we're already in, but it's this year. But next year it will be less at the 623. Next slide, Martha. And the same with the tech levy. We're one of the fewest districts without a tech levy in the metro area anyway. You can see that we have, we don't have a technology levy and many districts are receiving some additional revenue because they have passed a tech levy in their district.
So thank you, Julie, very much. So just a reminder to board members and the viewing public that we I have projected a $3 million shortfall. And the reason for that is, first of all, we had 200 fewer students than what we had projected. So that was about a $2 million less revenue than we had anticipated going into the new year. Also, as Julie just showed in that chart, state funding has not kept pace with inflation. And finally, we also had projected health insurance increases that were about $1 million more in projected additional expenditures than we had anticipated. We had several guiding principles throughout this process. And one of the additional considerations over the last couple of months that we talked about was to determine if we could make recommendations at this point and also ensure that as few people as possible lost jobs. As you review the timeline on the next slide. Thank you, Martha. We started the process last June when the board approved the revenue assumptions. And at that time, we looked at enrollment being 252 students for this current year. The past December, the board approved the final budget, which had an increase of only 50 students, not the 252. As we had planned then for the 2020 21 budget, the board set parameters last fall to maintain our fund balance, to restore class size ratios because we had hired staff for the projected number of students and they did not come. And also in December, the board approved changes to the open enrollment parameters that we had had. The rest of the timeline, then, we've been working on the budget for, as I said, the last several months. And because of some of the additional revenue that we've had since then, since we started this process, cost-saving measures and class ratio parameters. Although we are making $3 million in budget adjustments, we do not have to make $3 million in reductions. We shared adjustment recommendations with you a week ago and based on the board direction and hearing no additional board direction at that time, tonight we're seeking approval on these. Again, the parameters that we stated, the the board had asked us to stay within that fund balance. There was no direction from the board to change the class targets. So we maintain the class targets that we've been using for the last several years. We review staffing each year and align our staff increases or reductions to enrollment, to student enrollment. This year and last year, HR, teaching and learning have worked with principals on a collaborative process to ensure that there is agreement and consensus on those staffing models. And again, we did not change the class targets. The work that we did on restoring the class ratios happens annually and this work would have happened regardless of the of the budget adjustments that had to have been made.
When we first brought the revenue budget assumptions forward, we assumed a 2% increase because the legislature had already passed that measure. And so we will have a 2% increase in our gen ed revenue. We had increased, as Dr. Stalow stated, we're increasing our enrollment budget by 125 students. We had an increase in special ed revenue and additional achievement and integration revenue. So we anticipated almost $3.3 million in additional revenue. And since that time, we've increased that revenue by another $600,000. 200 of it coming from the Min caps. We have additional students attending from Farmington School District via tuition agreements. And then because there is a new base year this year with new legislation, legislation once again for special education, we are able to re we're able to shuffle our deck, it may be the best way to say that, and move some things around where we feel we are able to receive another $400,000 in special education revenue by moving our tuition billing out of the state formula to the federal formula. And we will not have that deduction out of our state formulas. We will see that increase of 400,000. So additional revenue of $600,000 since our original assumptions were brought to the board. And then these were our budget parameters for our expenditures as well. And we've talked about those. We've had some changes since then of these total expenditures of a little over $5 million. If you go to the next slide, Martha, our health insurance rates, instead of a 12 and a half percent, they're only at an 8%. So that's a $300,000 unspent cost would be the best way to say that. We have gone out for bids for our life and long-term disability insurance and we were able to save $120,000 there. And then also our transportation, we projected a higher settlement or higher contract amount with them and they were able to come down. And so we were able to save about $250,000 of unspent expenditures there. So there's an additional savings of about $670,000. So of that $3 million, of those two pieces, it's almost $1.3 million that we were able to just adjust without making any cuts and bringing in some additional revenue.
Thanks, Julie. We'll go ahead and move into the recommendations that you saw on Monday night. And I'll let Jim Quorum speak to the restoring classroom ratios.
Sure, thank you. So I went over this timeline last time on when we go about this. I, instead of reading through all of it, I think the biggest takeaway point here is that this is annual math that we do from February to April. We look at the number of students, try to try to draw a line in the sand somewhere and come up with how much staff that might be. And it seems a little impersonal, so we always pull in principles, teaching and learning. And we talk about all the variables related to that. But this is something that we do every year. One of the questions that I know has been asked often is that the these reductions that we brought forward of 10.5 FTE, it it's not unique to this year. It's it's unique because this district has always grown to the point where we've always added staff. But we do this math every April and we come to the board every April. And last year was no different, but last year you approved something like 12.4 additional FTEs to hire. This year, when we do the math, that's not the case. When we go and really try to hone in on those class ratios, it ends up being 10.5 reductions. So it's a, it's a math thing. And I know a couple of board members, Jonathan and others have talked about that. If we hire to it, then we also have to reduce to it. And that's a different conversation about the class. Outside of my process right now, you decide what that number looks like and and then we do the math around that. So I just wanted to talk to that. I don't know if I, I just confused more, but it's math that we do every year. And in this district, it's been adding every year because of the number of kids. And when you do that, that's the way you have to staff. And when we staff that way, we ended up overstaffing because as Julia said, many, many times, the students just didn't show up that we budgeted for. So so that's what I wanted to talk to in relation to this slide, I think, is that I guess the part of it that is confusing is that it's also part of the budget reductions. It would, this would look a whole lot different if there were the kids there, but the reduction still need to happen. It would look a whole lot different, but they're related, obviously, but it is a process that we do every year. Next slide. So with that, when we, when we do that, these were, the part of this was the non-renews that you did last month in April, April 13th board meeting. And of course, this 10.5, I think the other point I would like to make is that we talk in FTEs as positions, not people initially. The FTE is a position. So for instance, like this 10.5 FTE, less than half were actual people assigned to it. The rest were retirements, resignations or things along those lines. So so through attrition, at least half of this was gained through attrition. Yes, that means there's a position that was there, that's no longer there. But it it isn't 10.5 individuals, it's 10.5 FTEs of positions, of which a portion of those were some of the non-renews that you took action on last month. So I just wanted to clarify that because that's a couple of questions that I'd heard over the weekend. And want to make sure that I did my best to relay that. So overall, then, the savings would be the 650,000.
Thanks, Jim. Throughout the the process, we also talked about elementary deans. And while we are maintaining our elementary, all of our dean positions, when we studied a little bit deeper, we recognized that our elementary deans had an extended contract that our secondary deans did not have. So while we are maintaining the positions, we are also recommending that we reduce the extended contracts from 200 days to 185 days for our elementary dean position so that that's in alignment and consistent with our secondary dean contracts. So there is a bit of a savings there as well. The next slide does point out the adjustments that we had made in staff vacancies. And this has changed a bit throughout the process as well. But at this point, we're still recommending that at this point, we not fill the positions that you see here, the district naturalist position, the peer coach position and the synergy position. Jeff spoke especially during the study session about the district naturalist position and how we've often gotten outside additional funding for that. And at times when we've been able to afford to round that out as a district, we have. And right now, we're, we're at a point where that's a position that we would seek to not feel, fill at this point and then see what the future brings for that. And then the other area that the board asked us to review was in the administrative adjustments. And we did review that again. At this point, I'm not recommending a specific administrative reduction. However, we'll work on meeting this budget reduction target through the negotiation process.
I'll speak to the special education adjustment. This has remained consistent from the previous board work sessions on this topic. Couple of these positions are due to lack of student IEP needs. And then also with some of the resignations there, looking at case management size adjustments. There was a question that did come in, that came prior to the meeting regarding the reduction in paraprofessional support. Some of our staff, I think, have reached out or have asked you about with some of our IEP in our IEP processes, some changing from paraprofessional support to adult support. And that has been something as a district that we have done is when we've gone through and evaluated IEPs, we started making that adjustment. And what that does is it allows the district flexibility to meet the needs of a student on IEP. And it gives us into a more inclusive means. It allows the district look at the student need and look at parent support. But we also have several instances where we've had a co-teaching model where we have two adults in the room with the regular ed teacher as well as the special ed teacher that can also meet the needs of the student. And we also have situations where we have team teaching scenarios where we have both gen ed teachers in there that can provide support to the student. And then finally, that that change in in practice is also a, is also something that other districts are doing as well. And so when we are seeing students come in to our district, from other districts and seeing that language into in those IEPs, it is adjusting what we can in
It is adjusting what we can in order to best meet the needs of of the students that are coming to us from other districts and gives us more flexibility. This one here is has been consistent as well over the last couple of weeks, looking at energy efficiency savings as well as reducing some supply and technology budgets.
Thanks, Jeff. The summary slide here then does show kind of that full package of additional revenue projections, projected savings and budget adjustments. We'll make budget updates and adjustments like we do every year as needed as we move forward. Julie summarized this a little bit already, but as a review, I just want to note that of those $3 million adjustments that were needed. The 600,000 is in addition additional estimated revenue. There was about 670,000 in projected cost savings. And then about 650,000 in restoring those class size ratios, which we review every year. Several of the other adjustments, as we talked about, then were related to vacancies that at this point, at this time, we're recommending not be filled. And then again, looking at some changes in what our current student needs are.
I'm so a little bit about our what's the budget impact due to COVID-19, and I do want to talk about this. We do have some cost savings due to not having substitute teachers in the building and some fuel and utility costs. And these are just estimates right now, simply based on a half a month of what we could see for fuel and utility cost savings. For the month of March. And as we get some of our goals here from April, we'll be able to more fully understand what some of those savings will be. So that may change a little bit. But we've also had some additional expenses for technology, for e-learning and distance learning, unemployment costs. We talked a little bit about that last meeting that the district will pay those unemployment costs and then we levy for those. I do have on here refunding our fees for activities, but now we are finding that we are refunding fees for parking and refunding all of our fees. For a lot of different things as we accumulate that. And so even the parking fees itself are $200,000. And so we're up to about 325 at least in reductions of and refunds of fees. And then we do anticipate that we will have to transfer some money out of the general fund to cover the losses in community ed. Because we just weren't able to generate any revenue for that program under the executive order.
Thanks Julie. And in addition to the budget adjustment recommendations that we're bringing forward, we know that we're going to be continuing this process as we work with the board. On additional revenue strategies and and long-term strategies. Some of those are listed here, but I'm sure there'll be more that we talk about over the next several months. So looking at the uncertainties of state funding and the economic impact of our world right now. It will mean, as I said, that we continue to plan for additional budget adjustments and reductions moving into the next year. Our goal would be to engage the board and staff in discussions and a process beginning this summer so the board can approve reductions or budget adjustments by December. So you can see, we would look at hopefully the summer in June and July or August, reviewing some of the budget scenarios. There'll be information we don't know yet at that time. But what we can do is we can predict some potential scenarios to see what that impact would have. We'll continue to explore explore some of the identified areas that we've already been looking at as well as other ideas that we got from staff and from board members and other administrators. And then as we merge into the fall, we'll make sure that we are able to come back and have the board approve budget parameters with direction for reduction amounts. We'll engage in a stakeholder process and begin to draft those recommendations. Be talking about those recommendations in the end of October through November with board approval of reductions in December is what we would be seeking. As I said, I think the information that was presented this evening is the same information that was shared last Monday night. And I believe that throughout this presentation, we've addressed additional questions that we received over the weekend. And with that, I would seek approval of these recommendations.
Thank you, Terry and group. Do I have a motion to approve the budget recommendations as presented this evening?
So made.
By Jonathan, second by state. I'll go around and ask if anyone has anything else to add to our previous discussions. I'll start with Melissa.
Thank you, Lee. So what I am continually hearing from our community, both now and historically, is to direct our district to steer clear of reductions that directly hit the classroom. Namely, teaching staff. Everything has to be on the table before we do any kind of reductions in teaching staff is what I'm hearing. In previous study sessions and board meetings, I've. Looked to our administration for some direction as to what it would look like if we eliminated consultants, namely Nexus. Also, the teacher racial equity training with Dr. Shrocky Holly. Those are areas. Yes, they fall under staff, staff training, but those are areas when everything is on the table. I've asked about HR. We've got five staff in Jim Quorum's area and in business services in Julie Sink's area. We have eight staff there, I believe. Looking to upper management salary position, percentage reductions. We've asked for more specifics there. We've even include my recommendation, since enrollment is down by 200 students. The option should be on the table that since Jim had mentioned, we don't have the students there. That we need to consider possibly a 12-month delay in opening the new building. We're still using those funds. There's nothing that says we have to use it this next budget year. But I could put money down that you've got every single teacher that's listening to this call. They would rather have a job. Than to have the kind of cuts that we're looking at here and not even considering more administrative costs, administrative cuts. Including Department of Teaching and Learning. I I believe we've got about five. Correct me if I'm wrong about five paid administrative salary folks there. Is that correct? Hello?
Your question again? Sorry, you cut out on me.
Okay, we've got about five paid administrative salary folks in the teaching and learning department.
As directors and yes.
Yes, and we've got about four TOSSAs, teacher on special assignments.
We've got the technology integration specialist. We have an elementary curriculum specialist. We have a secondary curriculum specialist. We have a special education TOSA. I think it's in the org chart that I believe, I mean, that would have the detail of of the different departments.
Okay, and then we've got a couple of administrative assistants as well.
Correct.
I'm hearing loud and clear from from our community that we need to look more deeply at the administrative cuts. If we look at the summary of recommend aid, recommendation adjustments. Administrative adjustments is only 130K. What would it look like if we dove more into that area? For reductions, so it's more equitable. I mean, everybody's got to feel the pain. Julie, any thoughts of what that would look like?
I would have to defer to Terry for that question.
We presented a week ago tonight and at that point, it was pretty clear that we were we did not have, we had additional questions as you're asking, Melissa. We didn't have additional direction from the consensus of the board to change the recommendations that were coming forward. So tonight, these are the recommendations that are in front of you to act on.
I have no further comments at this time.
It's back to you, Lee.
I apologize. I had to leave the room for a second. After Melissa, Michael, did you have anything to add?
Some general comments. First of all, I want to thank everybody who gave us input over the last several weeks. Lots of emails to go through, lots of phone calls. I'd also like to thank people who not only called us, but who were who entertained when I would call to ask questions and to get input. I just, I want to say that there's been a lot of effort by several board members to to listen to everybody involved in this process. I do feel like when we came to the April 13th meeting that we were. The overall impression I got from all of the input at that point was that we should come forward and fight for. The elementary dean position and the tech innovationists in this moment in time. I feel like we did carry those requests to the table and brought that forward. Once we move beyond that, we're continuing, as Melissa said, to get a lot of feedback. And. What I just want to make sure we're acknowledging is what a complicated process is and there's so many things happening at one time. By the classroom size ratios that we have established and approved in the past. We are doing what we said we would do every year. But this year we're downsizing. My question is, moving forward, if. We want to change that, we want to look at talking to the admin team about changing class size ratios or engage stakeholders such as teachers and paras and parents. And say, if what we're saying on paper is not really what we're feeling in the classroom. If our gen ed classes in the high school are way too big or we have elementary lower grades that are too full. Then I think we have to prioritize that based on, I think it was Dr. Sal who outlined where we're going next with diving right back into the budget discussion. So I think that we're doing what we said we would do regardless of where we're at in the budget. If we want to look at class sizes, I I'm only one person, but I would recommend to the board, we consider moving that up and have a really thorough discussion. How are they really determined? What about all the special cases, that sort of thing? I see that as a separate issue tonight. I have concern about the feeling, and it's a very real feeling of simplifying it to teachers versus admin. I think we need to do some look going forward and not treat admin as sort of this abstract thing that is anything but a teacher. And get a better sense of if if people are writing to us and saying there are assistance to the assistance. Is is that really true? And are those roles really playing critical, making a critical difference? If so, we need to just kind of be exploring that and go back and forth so that the teachers aren't thinking there's this nebulous, you know, it's it's all admin. And the admin is listening to, here's what we're feeling class size wise. So I I feel like there's kind of that shift. So going forward, I would like to just kind of as a board member and then as a community, be really transparent about not all these positions are listed as admin or they are funded differently. Because perceptions are playing very heavily right now, I think, in the emotions that surround the budget. The issue of paras and special ed also, we're saying that we're reducing because of the IEPs. If we, as a board, have concerns about how we're handling the number of paras or special ed, then I think that has to be another topic we escalate going forward. Learning more from the admin team, doing our research, talking to the, again, talking to stakeholders, which is hard during a pandemic. But I'd like to see that as something we elevate. This is another theme that came through in almost every conversation. And another thing, just to to state that I had a lot of questions about the fund balance and referring to it as a rainy day fund. And that if COVID is not a reason to reduce our fund balance, then what would be? I mean, this is our rainy day. But there's really so much more to what a fund balance is and what our. School district has to do to maintain our credit rating, to be ready for potential revenue shortfalls that we may be facing. The interest rates that we get, there's so much tied into what a fund balances. It's not a matter of saying, let's take it out of the savings account and make sure that we keep these three people paid. As our fund balance goes down. So I just, that's something we could do better as a board to is to kind of explain that that's not a savings account waiting for something like this. There's, you know, very specific reasons we have that set aside. This is all very hard. Anytime we lose people, the naturalist is the other one that comes up. Personally, I I don't see it as getting rid of the naturalist position. I see it as not filling the role this year so we can protect as many jobs as possible. But that is a board, we have to look at that going forward if that's a priority in our district. There are priorities, but if we decide as a board that we want to look at class size differently and the number of paras and the, you know, peer coaching and the naturalist. We have to find the other places we're going to cut. And there's, there's not going to be winners, but if we decide that's how we interpret. Our mission and our strategic direction, that the emphasis there has to tie to our fiscal choices. Then we have to find the other places to cut because as they showed, we run so lean. So I I just is such a complicated thing, but the issues are not all one simple thing. There's columns of things that we have to look at going forward. One comment I would like to make to, I don't know if other people got this feedback, but after the last meeting when we did talk about things. We certainly can look at consultants, but there was some concern raised on my part when we talked about. Reducing programs like Shereki Holly, when we are trying so hard to close achievement gap and include diversity and inclusion and meet all our student needs. I did get a lot of pushback from that after the last meeting, so that's, I just wanted to share that. I'm not sure if everyone else had that experience. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Enrique, did you have anything else to add?
Sure, I can chime in. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, very detailed. I appreciate you, Julie, for highlighting all the different ways that we are saving or have saved because of buildings being closed, of utilities not being utilized in a variety of different ways. That we have recognized savings more organically just from the nature of the state of emergency that we're in right now. And it's that kind of thinking that I challenge all of us to continue doing, looking at different ways that we can think creatively and stretch and be a little bit more malleable. And how we look at. Our budget. It's not just ones and zeros. It's not just adding and losing. It's what can we do differently? Whether it's delaying the start for that network administrator, whether it's delaying the start for the district naturalist. What does that look like? Delaying the opening of a school, what does that look like? Not only. Financially, financial is an important measure, but there are other implications too of what does that mean in terms of the support we provide to our community? The support we provide to the teachers, thinking of the network administrator. So the support that's provided to all of the, everyone that utilizes our our technology now in this learning at a distance environment. So that's, that's really my message and that's really the call that I want to make sure that we underscore every decision with. What does it mean? Why are we adding it? When do we need to add it? When do we really need to add it by or remove it by just so that we can? Be wise and shrewd stewards of the public trust. Because my sense is that that public trust is kind of waning. Through the referendum ups and downs through this entire ordeal of not only COVID-19, but also. The current budget reduction projections here and additional work to come later. So that's my challenge to to every single one of us that we be mindful of all of these components. Looking through all of the different messages and the interactions I've had just in the past month with teachers, with sped, with. Paras and support personnel. Eighty people. Eighty people who have issue with how the budget is laid out presently. Not only, they all recognize that cuts need to be made. Granted, it's more of. Granted, it's more of, okay, how can we make these cuts when in the classroom? Kind of echoing Michael's comments of, okay, this doesn't quite feel right. The numbers or that, that assumption of classroom ratio doesn't feel right when we have this, that, or all these various situations that are happening in the classroom, all of these different cases that emerge. Because we are not only teaching the academic portion of the learner, we are embracing the entirety of the owner, of the learner, the social emotional component. And it's that teacher who's standing at the front that needs to be at the ready to deal with everything that comes within that full spectrum. So it feels like there's a gap. The numbers look right, but then there's the reality that's happening at that point of learning between the teacher and our classroom learners. So similar to Michael's comments, we need to explore that a bit further, maybe not now, but very soon we need to explore that and figure out how to solve that gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Enrique. Mary?
Okay, thank you, Lee. So I, first of all, I echo some of what Enrique said. I understand some of what Michael said. I got a few some very discreet but descriptive comments. And one is that we need to understand that our teachers and support staff, you know, this is their livelihoods, they're not in it for the money. They are personally invested in the success of their students. And this isn't the first I've heard about teachers feeling like they weren't supported, et cetera. I've been hearing it for a couple of years now, it's been getting worse. And they are eyewitnesses to their own students' success. And when you put a teacher in a classroom or a support personnel in a classroom and they simply don't have the resources or the support to actually enable these students to succeed, it hits them personally, it's emotionally devastating, and it should be because it is also to the student. It can be life-changing to actually give students the support that they need versus talking about this in terms of numbers. First of all, you know, the financials aren't that difficult. And it is something that we need to stop constantly lamenting that they're so difficult, it's complicated, et cetera. Because when you tell people it's too complicated, you're actually giving them carte blanche to abdicate their responsibility in this situation. And it isn't our control, okay? The financials, we're the board, we have fiduciary duty. It isn't our control. Seeing this coming, planning for it, trying to get ahead of it was our responsibility as a board. And I take that personally, I take it seriously. And I know it has a direct impact on educational outcomes, on both teachers, support staff, et cetera. I've also listened to teachers and teacher support staff over the last couple of years. And I heard it quite a bit a few years ago, that they were at or near a breaking point before the budget announcements, way before the pandemic, even going into this year. There was a resounding call that they are, they've had it. I mean, it's, it's been, it's been quite stressful. As we've grown as a school proportionally, I mean, as we've grown as a district proportionally, the support services have not kept up with it. And to brag about being lean is actually not always a good thing. It means we've cut off some of our lifelines, we've cut off our sole mission. And that is disturbing. We're seeing, and we have been seeing, and this is why we've been engaging in all these different pathways, because their critical milestone reading of math scores have stagnated or dropped. I'm hoping the new fast bridge is going to help, but it certainly does not replace teacher-student interaction and how important that personal interaction is. And I'm sure the teachers are seeing it more and more right now. I've heard it said to me, I've heard it said that this individual interaction because of the e-learning is actually making them understand their students more. But we still have issues where we just don't have enough. Okay, we've eliminated reading and math interventionists. I don't, I don't know of any math intervention going on. And I've seen the reading intervention firsthand, and it's definitely become very, very, very large groups. So the individuals don't necessarily get the attention that they're, they're in. And we wonder why reading scores are dropping or stagnating. Okay, I have been on the board for three years and even before then, I have never heard a day where they said they had enough pairs. It's always been, we don't have enough, we can't find enough. Okay, so to go back and say that we're changing to adult support, I'm wondering if we're just changing the data to change the optics that were actually helping out while still reducing student support. I've seen IEPs and 504s grow, and it's been reported countywide that they're growing. So again, there's the numbers and then there's the reality, as Enrique pointed out. Okay, also, when we say we're re-establishing class sizes and we say we're going to this average, an average statistically means that 50% or more is greater and 50% is less, right? So an average really means that we can go a lot larger. And I've seen class sizes getting bigger. I've had it reported to me that class sizes are getting bigger. And also our average, particularly in the high school and the middle school, includes lower end electives. When I walk through, when I walk through the middle school or the high school, I count students. I've rarely seen a class size less than 30 at the middle school in core classes. And I've seen classes, even with the new space, filled to the brim with one teacher. So I think we need to take that into consideration. And I think we need to take into consideration that as you increase that and as you put more stress on students, the core reasons why people want to move into our district is dramatically diminished. Because we've always said how great we are with this and how well our students succeed and compared ourselves to other districts. So we have to understand that by making these choices, by choosing to cut disproportionately student-facing interaction that helps their educational outcomes, we could actually be reducing our ability to bring ourselves out of the financial situation that we're in. And that's not good. Finally, you know, I keep hearing that the board gave direction. Well, I was, I, I'm not in agreement with that, okay? I think that we have ultimate fiduciary duty. We have as a board primary oversight and we are the last stop to vote for this. I haven't seen more than one variation on one option presented. We really need to understand all the options, the tactical and strategic implications of each option. And sometimes we're going to put options on the table that are simply not viable, but we're going to learn from that. That's how the process works. So everything needs to be on the table, okay? And I haven't seen that. I just, I haven't seen that. I think that to delay, all we're doing in this process by cutting the way we are is delaying the inevitability by making less cuts in the same area just so we can do it next year, even as we're increasing open enrollment and some district growth. Not as much as we want, not as, nothing like that was predicted on the PowerPoints, but definitely could have been seen by looking at other reports, okay? And so we need to come to the table. We need all the options on the table and to openly and transparently discuss them. We owe that to the teachers, we owe that to the students, we owe that to the community. And also, I believe that if we can do that, we will start to, well, we will at least stop the eroding trust that's going on that I'm hearing full bore from not only all the people that have graciously written in to tell us what their feelings are and why and their positions and how this is going to impact them, but also in the community. And if we can restore some of that trust, it's possible the community will help us get out of this. So I definitely have some concerns about the options that have been, that have been put before us. I want us to focus on our mission. And as I tell the students that I do work with, not only in this district, but in my previous areas of teaching GED and everything like that, I always tell them that if you wait just and do the test, you're not going to learn. But if you do the work through the way, the grades will come. In our case, I believe that if we use that same analogy, if we do the work now, we actually put everything on the table and we focus on educational outcomes and the mission of our district, that we will be able to succeed in this environment. And otherwise, you know, if we only treat our students as dollar signs and forego our mission, we're not only not in the right business, we're going to be out of business. So we need to consider that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mary. Jonathan, did you have anything to add?
Sure, thanks, thanks, Chair Schimmick. As others have said, echo the thank you for all of the community members who have reached out, emails. I had planned to kind of prepare a written version of what I wanted to say tonight. Never really had a chance because I was reading emails up until about the time that we logged into the meeting because they just kept coming in. I will just put it out there that I will, I will be voting yes tonight, not without some reservations and not without some disappointment. I don't think that any of us ever want to vote yes for anything that involves the word cut. But I wanted to walk through very briefly kind of the foundation of that choice, some of the reservations that I have and ultimately the reasons why I will be supporting the measure. The foundations of this to me, number one, you know, it's our job. We're elected to make the hard decisions. And we need to balance, we need to do our best to balance student needs with the financial realities we are faced with in this moment. Part of my thought process is I do believe that this is a first step. I do believe there's more to come. There will be ramifications for us as a district and every district throughout the state, frankly, throughout the country for the coming years, based on what's happened over the course of the past eight weeks. Interestingly, I think the most, maybe the most controversial, controversial component of this plan is the one that should be, in my mind, the least controversial, and that is the staffing to our established ratios. If we, as Michael said, I am open and happy to start another discussion as we go through the next round of budget conversations about those ratios and having a conversation about are they right and is it appropriate? But if we use them, as I've said before, if we use them to staff as we grow, we need to use them as we need to contract. So I do have some, some concerns. I, you know, we did as a, as a board, many of us did ask to see a little bit more different ideas and potentially more cuts coming from the administrative world. It is right, wrong, or indifferent, I think, as board members and as community members. It's where we all want to see things happen first because none of us want to see our classroom staff suffer. And I think that includes all of the folks in our administration who also don't want to see cuts to our frontline teachers if we can avoid that. And, and from the first proposal to tonight, that, that part of this did not change. I think we asked some tough questions. I sense that going forward, as we go into another round of this, I'm confident that we're going to get a bit more granular and dive a little deeper. And as everybody has stated, that there will be, that everything will be on the table. This is a first round. One of the positives about this process and the conversations that I've had is it has, I think, brought up, again, the discussion of staffing ratios, is that right? I think it's brought up this issue of changes to how IEPs are being written. And I think that's something for us to gather. I appreciate that Jeff addressed that a bit tonight. I would like to learn more. I think, I think that's an important thing for us to be mindful of going forward and to understand better. But with regard to this specific moment and what has to happen with the budget, I think that that is the reality that we face, is we do have to make some decisions. A stakeholder, I want to go back just for a moment. Someone I spoke to today mentioned that the lack of any change to what was happening on the administrative side did have a feeling that we as a board asked initially for some additional action there. That hasn't happened. Again, I think it will going forward. The, the comment that was made was simply, you did as a board give that direction, we did not receive a response. And it calls into question the dynamic between the board and the administration. And it, and the individual I was speaking with, it's one of the things that can sow some of that, some of that morale issue. And, and I feel that and I understand that. But I also know that we're all having conversations and preparing for the next wave. And again, I do think that those things will, will start to happen. So while I, while I do have some reservations, here are the reasons why I'm voting yes. Earlier tonight, we just approved resolutions to lay off or terminate 155 people. As Melissa stated earlier, they are neighbors, they're our friends. I read every name. Two of those names were hockey moms whose kids I coached through the years. And if you'd have told me five years ago that I was going to be voting to eliminate somebody's job whose son was, you know, one of the best penalty killers I had, I never would have, I never would have thought that's going to happen. It's hard, these are, this is real life, it's real people. And, and there's a human toll. And so for me, the fact that we have a solution that allows us to close the gap in the budget in the immediate term, that requires no additional people to lose positions, is something I can get behind. It may not be entirely consistent with our strategic plan, but I think we're going to get that sorted out as we go through another round. Right now, in this moment, there is value to me in being able to make this, resolve this issue and affect as few people as possible. We did maintain the tech integration, folks. We maintained the elementary dean, that we heard a ground swell of support for those positions to remain. So this might not be perfect, but I think it's, it is an acceptable solution at this time. We had a double whammy of a budget situation coupled with a viral Armageddon in society. And things just have happened that none of us could have imagined. And I think we're making a first step toward that. I anticipate in the coming months, as we go through the next wave of this, I anticipate a robust process. I want all of that stakeholder input all over again and want us to have, as others have said, everything on the table. But I think it's time to put, for me, it is time to put this choice, this decision in the rearview mirror, make it move on so we can start on the next round because it's going to happen again. That said, tomorrow morning, and when I encounter people in the community or conversations, I will tell people why we as a board made the decision we made, not why I voted the way that I voted. I will support the decision that's been made. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Jonathan. Stacy?
Okay, um, in preparing for tonight, I, number one, want to start out and say that myself, as a board member sitting here for 10 years, almost 10, I realize that each and every one of you who has gotten into education, whether it be a teacher or an administrator or wherever and is working for our district, is here for kids. And is that, that is the center of why you do what you do. And I want to make it clear that I know you don't see dollar signs when you see students. So I just wanted to be clear. I think as in preparing for tonight, I've read each and every, and thank you, Lee, for responding as you have to all those emails. I think we're close to 60 in the last week. Each and every one, I have Each and every one I have read, um, and looked at the critique, um, in that, um, what was being raised. I think, um, I'll echo what some of my other fellow board members said in the sense that on that, after that first presentation, we kind of heard loud and clear the dean and the tech interness. And I feel like we, um, made moves that way as in to supports for teachers and for our elementary, um, principals and moving forward with, you know, um, taking those off the table. In this last round of of, um, feedback, just in the sense of, you know, the sped and the, um, FTE. Um, I went back and I listened to the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh meetings, looked, um, and listened to all the, you know, everybody's presentation again and the board members' comments. I think the administration took the correct direction with where we went, with what was being said. There was not consensus on the board to make those changes, um, any further changes at administration. Um, I do fall back on, um, I spoke with Julie about the April nineteenth meeting of last year of twenty nineteen before going into this year where we looked at staffing wise, what the two hundred and fifty students were, what we approved, the FTE as in relation to that. And quite simply, the kids did not come. I mean, they came, a hundred and twenty-five of them came, but then seventy left, seventy to seventy-five, so we're back down to fifty students up of last year, not two fifty. So students to teach. And so unfortunately, with eighty percent of our budget falling in line to people, these type of cuts are going to be people. And um, I do think we're at the beginning of this. I kind of said that in the last, um, meeting as well. And so the fact that we can somewhat um, hold people, hold the positions, um, without having any further cuts, um, and layoffs after just laying off a number of people is important to me as well. I do, and as I did speak in the last two sessions, really want to put forth the effort into which we're going into this again and turning around and doing that. And I, uh, I think we need to make sure that data drives our decisions. I, you know, we hear a lot of anecdotal things here at the table. Um, I I guess I'm going to look for a deeper dive, um, into like class size, like let's talk about how we do that more in detail. Let's, uh, talk about how we, um, figure out sped and and what goes into those decisions and what assumptions are we making? It's things that we need to, you know, look deeper at, and we need data behind it, not anecdotal stories. Because we're not hearing from every single person that is in the district. We're hearing from a portion, which is good, but we also aren't hearing every single person. So I think it's important that we do get a broad stakeholder look, um, at this going forward, and that includes parents. Um, and I know it's going to be difficult probably with COVID, but we've managed to do quite a bit with Google Meet, so I'm assuming we can continue to do that um, in this, in this format. So, you know, I have faith in the process going forward. I do think we need to be brought in um, and on the loop and looking at, you know, what, what assumptions are being made, what, you know, what goes into these kind of decisions? And really looking at it as compared to our strategic plan, you know, what is it that we, we value here? Um, and that is our guiding document. I will, I will be supporting, um, this tonight going forward, um, with a somewhat heavy heart, um, knowing that I think this is going to be something that we're going to be in unfortunately, um, for a little while. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Before you speak, Melissa, I'd like to say a few words. I think I've heard at least once from every board mem- member. Um, first, I'd like to, um, acknowledge all the emails um, that we received. Um, I'm assuming that every board member read them. I know I did, and a couple of you commented that you did. It's good to hear your perspective. Um, I would like to have had that perspective earlier so that we could have had a a more knowledgeable discussion possibly, um, rather than at five o'clock tonight before the meeting started. Um, that was a little bit hard to to digest some of that stuff um, that quickly. Um, I also want to thank the administrators for doing what we asked. Um, as a board, we gave them parameters that we voted on. They followed those parameters. Um, there were some individual board members that made requests, um, but as a board, I believe that administrators followed the parameters that we asked them to follow. Um, I do agree, um, that this is the first, the first round of cuts. Um, I'm not minimizing those cuts or those adjustments. But they're kind of on the edges. Um, I think it will be getting deeper um, as we move forward into the next budget planning and and cutting, um, process. Um, and I do expect that the board will be more involved from the very beginning. Um, and that I'm confident we'll be starting that discussion much earlier. Um, so that we have more time to prepare for it. The whole COVID virus has thrown everybody, um, in disarray. We're not sure what anything's going to look like by fall. Um, and as far as the morale of the staff, I think it goes, you know, I think everyone's morale is affected by budget cuts. I don't think it's just teachers that are affected with the, with the, how they feel about everything. Teachers can teach, but they need the support. They need just the support of the entire district, um, the community, the board. It goes beyond just, you know, teachers. Um, and everyone's morale is affected. Um, whenever you start talking about budget cuts, it doesn't matter who you are, where you're working, if you're, if you're safe from getting cut, good for you, but it does affect your morale. I mean, these are your fellow employees. Um, so it does affect everyone. And COVID isn't helping anybody's morale these days. I guess, um, I had some other notes to say, but most everyone has said something before. I'm glad that we can minimize the cuts that we are making. Um, we're not filling some positions that have been vacated by retirees. That's unfortunate. It'd be great if we could have all the support we needed. Um, that's not going to happen. We can't do it. We just can't do it. I am, I'm a strong advocate for kids, um, personally and, um, as a board member. But we can only do what we can do. Um, so I will support the, um, presentation of the budget reductions for tonight. Um, knowing that they're going to get harder the next time. Um, Melissa, you had some comment to make? Another comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, I was just going to say Jonathan and Mary were correct in that the board between our first, uh, couple of study sessions and and, uh, the last board meeting, we have not been presented with measurable administrative reductions, um, as we had requested. And I will take the action, um, therefore make a motion to postpone definitely this vote.
I have a motion and a second on the table right now. I don't know that I can take another motion, Melissa.
I think Melissa can make a motion to table.
I I'm not, I'm not clear on what it can be right now. I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Uh, I do. Motion, uh, the postpone definitely requires a second. And if I could finish, um, the the motion to do that postpone definitely would be until the budget proposal can be given to us showing administrative cuts of one quarter of the targeted two point four million, which would mean, um, six hundred thousand K is total. Administrative cuts, as we've shown right now, is only a hundred and thirty K, so would be participating or contributing another four hundred and seventy K in administrative cuts.
It, that's your motion?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm not, okay. I guess I'm not familiar with how I handle this, to be honest. Um, if the board, if there's someone that would like to make a second?
Is Martha our parliamentarian? Can we check if we can be doing this motion?
Can you enter the meeting, Martha? I think she has to start the presentation to do it.
It does require a second.
Actually, I believe you can.
I, okay, I can take an a motion within the other motion that's on the table? Okay. Okay. Um, then I need a second to that motion.
This is Mary. Um, I I've, um, so I'm a little unfamiliar with the specifics of Melissa's motion, but I will second a motion if the motion is changed to delay the vote tonight for more discussion. Because again, I am not satisfied with the with what has been brought to the board to make this decision. So if Melissa, I I give this back to you.
I think if Melissa made a motion, I'm looking for a second to her motion. I don't believe I can have an amendment to her motion. Um, Stacy? You're muted.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to get off. Um, I just, yeah, I mean, Melissa can definitely motion to table, and then there needs to be a second, but then there's no discussion, and there's a quick vote on that if there's a second. And then it goes, depending on what happens, it goes back to the original or not.
And it's not to table, it's to postpone definitely. So we definitely will be bringing the vote, but it's got to have some more, got to have some more administrative, something more from an administrative has to be pushed forward.
Postpone, postpone indefinitely or definitely?
Postpone definitely is the motion. It's number six.
I will second that. This is Mary. I will second that, that motion.
I have a motion. I need a clarification on the motion, Melissa. You said postpone definitely, and then you started talking about numbers. Are you just talking about postponing definitely?
Postponing definitely because we need to, we want to get some more administrative conversation and cuts.
Okay, and Mary, you're, you want to second that?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, so I have a mo- uh, motion and a second. Um, is there any discussion?
I think we've heard clearly from, uh, our community, and not just over the last three days of inundation of emails, but, um, throughout this period. Um, I hate to refer to this is round one and there could be other things. I think we need to spell it out, and I think we've got, um, you know, this is a new process for a lot of the folks on the board. Some of us are veterans, but um, it is up to the board and the fiduciary, uh, responsibilities that we have to make sure that we are covering all the bases here. And I don't think we've asked several times, I think we need to have that conversation more clearly, and we need to be digging more clearly in those administrative areas. I think it's important.
Um, you broke up, Melissa, and it's now you're frozen, I think.
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Yeah, we need to be
And then it froze.
Okay, yeah, we need to be digging more clearly. We're hearing it from our community, and, um, the pain needs to be felt throughout the, um, throughout the district. Um, we're not seeing it there. I mean, several of us offered to give up our board salary. Um, as small it is as it is, we didn't get on the board to be taking a salary, but we didn't get much, uh, support back from other board members on that. I think we need to look at every single option. And, uh, and this is one that we've asked for, and we need to have some more, some more deeper dig on this.
Okay, Michael?
I guess the question I would have is we're having this debate in postponing is that even if we came back with more administrative cuts or something else, that doesn't change the issue we have with teachers and rightsizing. I think class size is something we have to talk about going forward. Um, as well as the special and paraprofessional support. So I'm unclear by tabling it, even if we push it back to the admin team. What will we replace that with? I think that's, I think that's in the next step going forward. That's talking about class sizes and and everything on the table like Melissa's saying. So I'm unclear if we would change our class size ratios and reinstate some of the FTEs if we were actually getting more cuts in the administration. Is that question clear? I don't know what we're changing.
We're not tabling. We're looking to postpone definitely. So we still want, we still want to vote on the budget. But I'm asking for more administrative cuts.
Right.
Away away from our teaching staff that's frontline.
And I'll, I'll finish here so that other people can speak. My question is, we decided to cut the teaching staff that we are based on the board parameters we set. If we need to, if we go back and change administrative cuts, that doesn't change that this is what we've set our parameters are for class ratio. We, none of us sound comfortable with how we're establishing those ratios. That's, I think, then a separate topic we need to do going forward. If we want to give board direction to revisit that. Looks like, uh, Jonathan has a clarification for us.
Just what Robert has to say on the postpone motion to help us out. A postponed can be applied to all main motions. It must be seconded. It can be debated, however, debate can only go into the desirability of postponing and not into the main question. It can be amended as to time. Uh, another, a little more that's, uh, relevant here, and it requires majority vote. So I think um, at this point, um, I would call for a vote.
Okay. Um, thank you for that, Jonathan. Um, with that, I will call for a vote, and that would be a roll call vote if we want to postpone indefinitely, postpone definitely, um, the budget vote this evening.
Can I wait, can I ask a question? Can I just get clarification of what a yay and a nay means then?
Oh. I, I guess I'm assuming a, a no vote would be that we are not going to postpone indefinitely, and a yes vote would be that we would postpone indep- or definitely, sorry.
I would be correct.
Okay. So if we say no, we continue on with the original motion. If we say yes, then we postpone.
You ready for me?
Yep.
Nay.
Melissa?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Michael?
No.
Stacy?
Nay.
Enrique?
Yes.
And I'll vote no. That motion fails. We're back to our original motion. I think I'd like to call the vote on that as well. I think everyone's had plenty of time to speak to the, to the budget adjustments. Um, and with that, um, I'll take a roll call vote. Um, Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Nay.
Mary?
Nay.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Nay.
And I will vote yes. That motion passes for three. Thank you for your work, everyone. Um, with that, we'll move on to the approval of the issuance of purchase orders. Right?
Yes, it is.
Stakeholder survey. I'm, I apologize. And who is that with, uh, with Chris Lynn?
Yep, that's right.
Okay, sorry.
That's just fine. Thanks so much. All right, Martha, you can go to the next slide. Thank you so much. All right, so this evening I've got some results from the stakeholder surveys that came out. So tonight I'll take you through the connection to the strategic directions, the specifications of the survey, the participation, some general overview points, and then summary results, um, by a strategic direction with some next steps. So the first part is that connection to the strategic directions. And the overall point, um, of why we do this survey is that it aligns with the mission of strategic directions to obtain feedback from multiple perspectives to use for the district and cite continuous improvement efforts as well as leadership development and improvement. Next slide. And, uh, you can see that here, this is the district strategic plan, um, continuous improvement that we use. So leaders set and build goals. Continuous improvement that we use. So leaders set and build goals around this data that we get from the strate- or from the stakeholder survey. Go ahead. So next I've got just a few specifications of this particular survey. So there were no items changed from last year to this year. The one change that was made is that instead of open-ended items at the end of each section, there were two open-ended items, um, at the end of the survey. One asking how, um, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, uh, meets its mission and vision and then two, um, how might it better do that? So we then look at participation here. So this shows participation by different groups over the last four years. You can see the years listed out across the bottom as well as the total number of respondents at the bottom. And then, um, each colored line shows the trends over time of the percentage of stakeholders in these different groups that were participating. So, uh, one thing to note, so over the past two years, it's been pretty stable with the number, or percentage of elementary, secondary students as well as certified staff. A slight uptick in, um, um, educational support services staff. And then you'll see from last year to this year, um, there was a decrease in the percentage of parents and guardians participating. So we just want to keep that in mind as we look through, um, some of the results. So we'll see today. All right, then the overview section. So these are some highlights of the survey that came out. So ninety-six percent of parents indicated that their child's school is clean and well-maintained. Ninety-four percent of parents saying that adults and teachers believe that my child can learn and be successful. And these areas, uh, are year-to-year ones that receive really high ratings. So with parents feeling respected at their child's school, parents saying they believe their child's school is safe and secure, and parents saying their child likes to go to school. So those were all really stable. And the next one looks at some student survey highlights. So high percentages of students saying their teachers are using technology to help them learn. This is before the switch to distance learning, uh, which is definitely part of, uh, what made things go much smoother in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Uh, there may be other places. Um, students feeling safe and secure continues to be high. As well as students saying that the adults and teachers in the buildings have high expectations for them. And students feeling connected to at least one adult in their schools. Those, um, numbers also have been really steady. Um, then the staff survey highlights, so the certified staff and educational support staff. Um, with a really high percentage, uh, reporting that they are aware of how to implement lockdown, um, with options procedures. Um, people really proud to be associated with the PLSAS and its brand, but it's also been very consistent over time. Um, and a high percentage of people, uh, saying that they work in an environment that respects diversity and is discrimination free. All right, so with that overview, I'm going to go into some results by strategic direction. So the strategic directions are listed out there and we'll start with student engagement. So these items that come out of the student engagement strategic direction are ones that are aligned to the district scorecard. So one of those is I like going to school or for the parents, uh, my child likes going to school. You can see, uh, those really steady trends over the past four years from elementary, secondary students and parents and guardians. And then, um, a, another item from that scorecard to keep that line of the strategic direction is the, um, parents responding and my child receives quality instruction. Also really stable. Um, I know that, uh, eighty-nine is not the same number as ninety-two, but with the number of people who are responding to the survey, that's still considered stable. Especially when, um, from twenty eighteen, nineteen to nineteen twenty, we had about half as many people responding and that number still stayed really strong. All right, um, fiscal accountability is actually not something that's a part of the survey. So we move on to looking at the learner experience. And here we have students responding about my teachers know how to teach so I can learn. So those numbers over time have been, uh, rock solid. That's, uh, great to see. We move on to the next one. Uh, this is asking certified staff and educational support specialists about, uh, working in an environment that supports innovative ideas and practices. The numbers are, um, also relatively stable with a slight decline for certified staff from last year to this year. Okay, moving forward, uh, looking at, um, results from Eastham items in the survey. I regularly engage students in Eastham activities, so certified staff and parents. So we can see that certified staff over time, um, have been increasing, uh, what they, their perception of their inclusion of Eastham activities and parent perception has stayed steady. And then, uh, looking at, uh, my culture, religion, or ethnic heritage is respected by other students has also been very steady over time. And then, uh, look at items connected with a safe environment. So I feel cared about by at least one adult in my school. I know that these lines look very far apart from each other. Um, whoops, sorry. Okay, but, um, they, that's just because of the scale of the, um, of the graph. Uh, those have remained really steady over time. Um, and then the next slide, Martha. I feel safe and secure in my school. And then parents saying like I, my child feels safe in their school. Um, so those parent ratings have gone up since, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen and then, uh, stayed level. So not a lot of change over the past, uh, two years. And then our last section is engagement. And that again, taken from that district scorecard is I'm proud to be associated with PLSAS and its brand. And that's also stayed, uh, pretty steady. So if I were going to give some overall summary results, um, of the survey as far as trends go, uh, there has not been a lot of movement in perception in the stakeholder community. So whether that be parents, um, secondary students, elementary students, certified staff, or, um, educational support staff. All right, um, another section that you're used to seeing in the survey results is leadership. So there are, uh, a number of school board items and then some superintendent ones. So over time, uh, this is about the school board providing the vision and mission necessary to meet the needs of students in our community. Uh, so that has gone up continually from certified staff has stayed really steady with, um, the, um, educational support staff and has also stayed relatively stable with parents and guardians over the last four years. Next slide. The school board encouraging community and staff collaboration. Again, we see an increase, uh, from certified staff that leveling off over the past year. Um, and then a slight decrease with parents. Again, I can't tell off the top if that can be attributed to the, uh, smaller participation of parents um, in the past year, or if that's a community-wide feeling, a perception. And overall, I'm satisfied with the school board. Really similar to last year's results with, again, a slight decline from parents and guardians, which could be attributed to, uh, numbers. All right, next slide. Now we're looking at some from the superintendent. So this is the superintendent communicates a clear vision consistent with the goals of the school district. Very consistent. And next slide, uh, the superintendent is visible and accessible in the district. This is also pretty consistent. And then, um, overall, I'm satisfied with the superintendent. Um, and you can see the trend line, there is some slight dips, um, with all three, uh, reporting, um, respondent groups. All right, um, then the next step of the survey, uh, so the results will be shared with stakeholders in a few different ways via the website and then, uh, with stakeholders, uh, within our schools that will come through principals sharing those results. Um, I myself will also be reviewing results with administrators, um, who will review those with building teams. Administrators then go through a process of developing goals, part of our process, a process of continuous improvement. They, uh, decide what action steps they'll be taking to implement those. And we continue through the process of reviewing the survey, um, next year, administering a survey and, uh, measuring goals being met. All right, what questions do you have?
This is a report only, so it doesn't require a board vote. Does anyone have any questions this evening?
I do.
Comments? Mary?
Um, is there a way we can get the raw data associated with these?
Yeah, so the, um, at the, actually, I'm gonna let Terry take that one, but, uh, that comes out in June to the board, is that correct?
Well, all of the results, all the results of the survey will be on the website tomorrow. Um, the, the trends that, um, the, the, the report that Chris Lynn gave, I think, is the first part on the website. And then just like we have every single year, all of the, the results of all of the surveys will, will be on the, um, website, I believe, tomorrow or the next day.
That's right. They'll be on tomorrow and that goes item by item. So you, you see results for each item, if that's what you mean by raw data.
No, I actually mean the raw data that went in the percentages, uh, not a breakdown of the percentages, but the actual numbers of who answered what, where, and how. Not names, of course, of who answered, but just how the, the actual questions were and the, um, numbers associated with each one of the answers.
Those are, yes, uh, there are tables along with graphs for each item.
Okay.
So you can see breakdowns of like, um, item number one. Uh, this number of people, um, said strongly agree. This number said agree. This number said disagree. And this number said strongly disagree.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, thank you, Chris Lynn.
Thanks so much, everybody. Have a good night.
Um, we'll move on now to the issuance of two thousand twenty, twenty-one purchase orders.
My goodness me. Um, this is what we normally bring every year, um, as part of our budget process so that we can start working on purchase orders, um, before the final budget is approved in June. That we would be able to produce purchase orders. And what that looks like is that, um, our staff would be able to purchase within their bud- allocated budget amount that we'll bring to the board. And, um, they would not, um, receive any product or be able to, we wouldn't pay any, for any products or services until after July one. And so we just produce the purchase orders so that we can kind of get in the queue for everything for that, that is needed for the district.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the, um, issuance of purchase orders?
So made.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
Jonathan, any comments or questions? Okay, all those in, uh, roll call votes, sorry. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Julie. Um, next on our agenda is, um, policy. This is the, um, second viewing of the policy, um, two thirteen, school board committees. Um, our first review of it was April twenty-seventh. Um, a couple of comments were made that we may want to change some of the numbers on the committees. Uh, and I believe the general feeling was that we wouldn't want to put numbers on, uh, because that's more procedural, but something that we would look at at the organizational meeting or in the fall, uh, in preparation for the organizational meeting. Um, there were a couple of title changes and, um, then the policy or the, how do you call it? Something of the whole, committees of the whole, I'm sorry, I'm losing it, um, a finance and policy to be added. Um, did anyone have any other comments at this time, um, before it goes on to the next viewing? I am not seeing any. So we move on to the next meeting. This will come back to us, um, on May eighteenth, um, with potential action on June eighth. Administrator reports, um, superintendent, Dr. Salo.
Thank you very much, Chair Shemek. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And our collective work is, um, is focused on achieving that mission. And tonight I'd like to update you on a couple of things that, um, in which we've been engaged. As you all know, our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools community is mourning the loss of former superintendent, Dr. Suan Guber, who passed away April twenty-eighth. Uh, she was a wonderful leader who left a legacy at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. During her time as superintendent, she was instrumental in bringing new programs to the district, including the Sage Program, uh, Laola de Lago, Spanish Immersion, Min Caps, Eastham, and the Prior Lake High School Fab Lab. Um, during her tenure, she also opened Red Tail Ridge and in addition to the Prior Lake High School. Uh, we will miss her dearly. Um, I just wanted to be sure that I made a mention of that, uh, for those in the viewing audience who may not have heard yet. Um, as we look to graduation plans, uh, Dr. Bezek and his, uh, team have been working on plans that include, um, alternate options. Should we not be able to hold a traditional ceremony on May twenty-eighth? Uh, to date, uh, John has collected input from parents and students. He's in collaboration with area principals. Um, just as I am with metro superintendents and has, uh, begun formulating some options. Um, we're expecting to receive some guidance, um, from the Minnesota Department of Education concerning commencement ceremonies. It's our goal to communicate as soon as possible with students, parents, and staff. Um, as I know, this is a, a big deal, uh, for our students and certainly for, um, Isabel and the rest of our seniors. I also want you to make you aware, uh, that with the governor's executive order requiring the extension of distance learning, we will keep all school facilities and fields close to the public, um, until June eighth. We'll continue to make decisions based on the guidance that we've received from the Minnesota Department of Health and the Department of Education as well as the governor. Um, just a couple other updates on some end-of-the-year, uh, events with the extended, uh, distance learning underway. We're focusing on some of those end-of-the-year details, including refunds that we talked about earlier. Um, we're also making plans for letting staff and parents know what protocols and timelines we'll have in place for students picking up belongings and supplies, um, as well as, as, uh, classroom items. Um, again, I feel like a broken record sometimes when I say we're waiting for guidance on some of, uh, these things from the Minnesota Department of Health and M, and MDE also to determine how to move forward with some of our summer school, um, options for students. And again, we'll communicate as soon as we know things. Um, also in the past few weeks, we've celebrated Administrative Professionals Day, School Nutrition Employees Week, uh, School Principals Day, and this week is set aside to celebrate our teachers as Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank our teachers and all of our staff for the amazing ways that they've continued to step up and support our students and families during this difficult time. And finally, uh, the district and PLSA sponsored, or the district and PLSA sponsored twenty-twenty district retirement celebration will continue to be held this year, uh, with some slight modifications. This year, we are celebrating the retirement of eleven of our colleagues. Uh, the celebration in the form of a parade will take place on May twenty-first from three-thirty to five o'clock at Prior Lake High School. The retirees will be spaced at a proper social distance along the sidewalk of the student entrance. Uh, we'll ask that no one leave their vehicle, but can wave and offer their congratulations, um, and kind words from their window. And cards may also be sent to the district office and we'll be sure that they get forwarded, um, to our retirees who are, uh, Jane, um, Jane Bello, Lori Bartman, Tim Bell, Ida Clark, Linda Dankers, um, Nanda Henchall, Todd Kemper, Paul Larson, Laura McBlain, James Danamo, and Gary Thorsett. So a lot of years of experience and hopefully you can all come to that celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any administrative reports? Uh, Jeff?
Yes, I just have a couple of items tonight, uh, just kind of, uh, uh, picking up where Dr. Stallow referenced on guidance. We are planning for and looking at different plans for elementary summer school options and targeted services programs. Um, the state seems to be evolving with their rules. Uh, certainly the rules that what we've done with targeted services in the past. Given distance learning, there isn't a direct fit there. So again, we, we're waiting for guidance. Um, we anticipate that there might be some distance learning components to think about. Um, but that hasn't historically been how the MDE is operated. And so they need to, they're spending their time kind of understanding and, and will provide some direction for districts because a lot of districts are looking at, um, a summer school program to help kids bridge the gap, particularly with this fourth quarter. Credit recovery. recovery that we've historically had at the secondary level will continue as is as in years past. Typically, that's been done in independent study formats with appropriate social distancing online type of things. We just received, we've been working on grading and assessment component, particularly at the secondary level. Certainly, we've got a lot of students who and parents who pay attention to GPAs with their four year plans, looking at post secondary options. And certainly, distance learning has has is not something any of us expected. And so there was some recent guidance that came from the MDE. Dr. Kevin Chutenger has been kind of working with Dr. Bezek. We've been getting some stakeholder feedback, particularly with secondary regarding fourth quarter grading, looking at A, B, but then also a passing or no credit. One of the impacts of those, it typically holds students harmless. A and B would help with their cumulative GPA, but the others would would acknowledge credit for the course, but not impact GPA. And that seems to be the approach that the that the MDE is is suggesting that districts go to is not holding students or holding students harmless as a as we look at this. They're also stipulating to the statement regarding this this spring go on report cards that pertain that this was a distance learning format. And then finally, Friday and today were teacher planning days. Friday, we we started out with some short sessions led by teachers and teaching and learning fifteen minute, thirty minute sessions regarding really promising practices and distance learning. A great turnout followed by learning team planning time and then individual planning. Overall, we've received very positive feedback about Friday. And then today, principals built said more of a site based plan with teachers and helping them again, plan for the for for May with distance learning and rounding out the end of the year. And so much needed time for teachers to take pause in the distance learning to, again, see what their colleagues are doing, have professional conversations, reflect on the past six weeks, reflect on on really how they've connected with kids, you know, again, some of the relationships that have been established, continuing to strengthen relationships during this time, check in on families and students. And so I think a much needed collective breadth for these planning days and much needed during this time on Friday and today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone, any other administrators? Okay, board reports. Are there any, anyone have a board report this week? I'm not going to go around the screen if anyone has one. Stacy?
Terry made mention of this in her letter to the to the board, but I just wanted to put it out there, that AMSD, we met with them and had a meeting, a Zoom meeting on Friday. It was really informative. We just got into small groups and went into breakout rooms and just talked a lot about the experiences and what's happening with distance learning, but also as it relates to equity. And it was interesting just to kind of hear, you know, anecdotally, like some stories from all over the state, you know, what this has done as as far as COVID and distant learning, you know, it's kind of heightened, I think, some of the strengths that people can do. But in the same sense, like there's kids that don't have access to the internet and their school buses driving around each day and dropping their supplies off. So I think it's really kind of pushed us on the equity lens. So it was interesting. They are going to be hosting, and I know it's available for all board members. And I think Dr. Salo noted it in her board newsletter is June seventeenth, just to keep that date tentatively. If anyone's interested, there's going to be a virtual workshop on some of the equity and diversity talk. So it's something that the Minneapolis Foundation and AMSD are busy working on, and it should be a pretty, pretty neat thing. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I can send out a note when I get more details as to when it is. Thank you.
Are there any other board reports? Jonathan?
Short and sweet, we did have a curriculum meeting before last week's work session. It was mostly catching up on what's happening with the adjustment to distance learning. The highlight for me was the parent members of the committee described how things are going for their families. One of the, interestingly, one of the things I mentioned is how appreciative they were of meals because it's just when you're when you are adjusting to teaching your children, not having to figure out who's making lunch was was something they mentioned as being very helpful. And lastly, not not really committee related, but on behalf of all the rest of our board members and everybody on the call, Lee, I think we all want to say thank you to you for your participation tonight. And you are, your family is in our thoughts with philosophy. And just want to acknowledge that and appreciate you making time at obviously difficult times. That's all there.
Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. Are there any other board reports? Mary?
I just wanted to point out in addition to what Jonathan said, a large portion of the curriculum meeting was actually hearing from Karina from the Native American Cultural Liaison. And that was very informative. And I'm hoping that she'll be able to also at some point in time, give the whole board an update on her role and job and what she's been doing during the during the shelter in place and the distance learning, which has been quite creative.
Okay. Isabel?
So kind of as the year has been wrapping up, the most that we've been doing with student council is finishing up some decision day posts for seniors and doing some last recognition for all their hard work as well as senior athletes who are missing their seasons or who have just taken part in their last seasons in general. The executive board has also been meeting with Dr. Bezek every week talking about how seniors are feeling. And I will also be participating with my VP in a meeting on Wednesday to talk about commencement. So I'm very excited to talk about that and looking kind of positively and hoping for the best. But no matter what, I know that we'll be, we'll get recognition and the rest of my class will be able to kind of get together one last time. Other than that, I just kind of want to give a last thank you to the board for the guidance and support of the last year. It's really shown me a lot about the community and the togetherness of Prior Lake and how lucky I am to be a part of this community and to have grown up in it. And it's got given me a lot of respect for all the hard work that's gone on behind the scenes. And I've had a really great time seeing all of the surveys and the analysis over every little piece and how much you all care about not only the students, not only the staff, the teachers, just the entire community. And it's really something that I'm going to take for sure into college and into the rest of my life, knowing that this is how a community should be and hoping that I can help foster communities like this. So I just want to thank you all for the love and support that you give Prior Lake. And I will be sticking around. I will come and visit. You guys are in great hands next year. The president next year is wonderful. She's delightful. And I'm just looking forward to the future of PL. So thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Isabel. Future events, our next school board study session is May eighteenth. Again, it will be interactive unless something major happens between now and then, that would be a positive thing. And then, as Dr. Stallow mentioned, the district retirement parade celebration is May twenty first at Prior Lake High School, three thirty to five. Seeing no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Stacy, second.
Second.
Enrique, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, I guess, still. Jonathan?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We're adjourned.